Hello, if everyone would, reminder to silence their cell phones. Stand up and do the fledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Ann, could you do the roll?
Oops, sorry.
She's like, sorry, yes, here.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Here. All right. Do we have any recognitions to go?
None.
None, all right. Reports. President's report, I have nothing to report out. Superintendent's report?
There's really no updates. Curriculum, finance, facilities, personnel, no updates. I think we're staffed okay, Kristen will give a transfer report today, so right now all the staffing's filled for what we need. If we get a few more transfers, we may have to add a point two, but policy advisory, our latest packets in the packet for tonight's approval, so that's all I have.
All right. Principals report?
Today was the first day of the new school year. We had freshman orientation from eight to 10, and then all of the students were in attendance for the remainder of the day. It was really nice to have the staff and the students back in the building, and the class of 2022 seems like it's going to be a really good class. And then on Thursday and Friday this week, students will attend grade level assemblies to be reminded of academic and behavioral expectations. We made parents aware that we would be doing that, and then we always post those presentations online in case parents would like to see them as well. Our open house is on August 29th at 7:00 PM, and we'll have a presentation before that at 6:00 PM to talk about enhancements to our safety procedures, as well as mental health supports that we have in place for this school year. We gave parents a brief notification in the beginning of the year letter that was sent home in July, and later this week we'll send additional information regarding open house in that presentation. All fall sports are up and running, and tryouts for the fall play are already scheduled. Those are on August 28th, and there's a mandatory information meeting prior to that on August 23rd in the auditorium. This year's play is Alice in Wonderland. And then in the principals' report, we have three brief reports. The first one begins on page five in Board Book, and this is a professional development report. We share this twice a year, so this is updated to include second semester information, as well as professional development that happened over the summer. And so as you can see, those items are marked with a red bullet. Just to remind you, there are four different funds in which we have some professional development. Title I, II, and IV are federal grants, and money that was not used in those accounts will roll over into the next year. And then the unclaimed tuition reimbursement funds is per the collective bargaining agreement, and that money cannot be rolled over into the next school year. So sometimes typically why we have money left over is because we earmarked money for teachers to go to a particular conference, and then for one reason or another they can't go, and we don't have time to reallocate it. So that's typically what happens and why that money gets rolled over. So you can see with Title I, we have about a little over $4,000 that will be rolled over into next year. Title II had about, we received over $40,000 for professional development in that grant, and that's typically our largest source of professional development. And we spent almost all of that, and we have a little over $2,000 that will be rolled over. Title IV was new this year, and we have $500 that will roll over for next year. And then in unclaimed tuition reimbursement, you can see that typically happens at the latter part of second semester and over the summer. And some important things to highlight in there, the teachers that are associated with the College and Career Readiness Academy worked really hard throughout the summer to prepare for being very intentional on how we were going to approach those students in their freshman year to be very consistent across those courses. And then teachers that had new textbooks had some time to prepare for those classes as well. And then you can see a lot of work was spent with preparing for the SAT, so that when students came back this school year, teachers were prepared and materials were updated to get students ready to take the SAT. And so we used almost all of that money that we had, and we had $34.90 remaining in that account. Before I go on to the next report, are there any questions on that?
How's the reception so far with the new program you have for the, you know, students that you felt needed? I forget what we call it, I should remember. What do we call it?
The College and Career Readiness Academy.
That's the first year for that?
Uh huh, correct.
How's the reception amongst the students and the parents?
It's only day one, but I think it's great.
I mean, you didn't have people saying, "I don't want my kid getting in," or banging us.
No, and we did give opportunities, you know, one of the primary placements was based off of students' reading scores.
Right.
So we looked at students' spring MAPS scores to see if they still needed to be placed in there, and then we offered opportunity in the summer to retest students to make sure that the students that needed to be there were in there, and then students that didn't were moved out.
Okay, thank you.
What's roughly a percentage of the incoming freshmen who are going to come in there? Roughly, you don't, I'm not going to hold you.
How many students?
It's been varying, so we probably have like around 60 students roughly, and I think the class is over 400. That number keeps fluctuating due to transfers, but I think we're over 400 now.
About 15%.
The next report is on page eight, and this is just updating staffing for the year. So as you can see on the bottom, I highlighted in yellow, we have a .1 FTE that hasn't been allocated yet. We're currently monitoring class sizes in science at the freshman years, particularly earth science, and as Dr. Skink has mentioned, we may need an additional .1 FTE. We have to add a section to that, but enrollment's still fluctuating a lot, so right now we're just monitoring that course, and that hopefully would be the only thing that we would need to consider adding. In November, once enrollment is stabilized, we always provide an update on this, and we also include the updated class size averages for each department. So you'll see this again in November. The last report is on page nine, and this is a snapshot of our transfer situation. So I compiled this on August 8th, and obviously, you know, information has already changed, but it's a good snapshot. So as of August 8th, we had 51 students transfer in and 16 students exit, so a net gain of 35 students. Our enrollment at that time was approximately 1,660 students. I say approximately because we still had families that hadn't proven residency, and then we had other students that had completed an application to enroll in RB. So I always provide an update on this in September, and by then usually the enrollment has stabilized, so it's a much better accurate picture of where we're at with enrollment. Are there any questions on either of those two?
We had talked about special ed transfers in. How many special ed of that?
I don't know, but I can have that information in September. I can break it up by grade level on special ed.
Well, we're up to an additional 20 special ed students. But on that, it will help in September. I'll confirm that.
And that's it for the principals' report.
Chief Financial Officer's report?
Okay, tonight I would like to highlight the July 2018 financials. This is the first month of the physical year. If we look at Board Book page 12 and look at our monthly financial report, total monthly revenue for all funds was $7.9 million. We did have three residency days where fees were collected, and then we received a corporate property replacement tax payment. If we look at our expenditures, total monthly expenditures were $3 million. We didn't have any capital or life safety going, so total operating was also the $3 mil. Our two largest expenditures for the month, salary and benefits was 1.3, and purchase service was 1.3 also. Out of that 1.3, we made the Airmark annual payment to get the discount. And at the bottom, you'll see our operating fund balance. We're at $18.9 million, and as a reminder, the board has restricted the $3 million in working cash, so leaving our fund balance at $15.9 million.
Any questions submitted on financials?
Nothing on the...
Okay, do you want to go to the next part of that?
Okay, the next part, the next part of the report on page 13 is the financial statements showing beginning fund balances with revenue and expenditure coming in for the first month. If we flip to page 14 and look at the revenue side, the majority of all the revenue coming in is our property taxes with our second installment from '17 as prior year. If we continue on to page 15 and look at the expenditures, everything is in line with where we're supposed to be relatively at. The numbers that we're using for the budget amounts for the year are the numbers that are in the tentative budget that was submitted in the Board Book. And once again, I want to highlight in the operations and maintenance, we're at 52% due to the full payment for Airmarks cleaning and custodial services. Following the financial statements is the revenue expense report. In the revenue expense report, the budget figures have not been put in there, so you will not see any budgeted items in there for FY '19. As soon as the budget gets more closer to being exact, I will be entering in those budget items, and then we'll be able to compare where our accounts are compared to budget. So it should be...
Can it get in for the next, before, for the end of August, so that when we see next month, there's a comparison?
I can, I can put the tentative ones in. There won't be too much movement, I believe, with the budget, so it should be pretty good to go with that. If there is any movement, it would just be reflected then in September.
Because without a comparison, there's no way of knowing where you're at.
Where you're at.
Where the numbers are supposed to be.
Following the revenue expense report is the student activity report. Really, the main account that's in the negative is the bookstore. With that, we had T-shirts for PE class was purchased out of there. Once the student fees are distributed to the correct accounts, that will be back not in the negative. Also in your board packet is a snapshot of the last quarter of building rentals. I was unable to get it into the last board meeting's report due to the timing of the Fourth of July holiday, but I wanted to go through the fourth quarter. Total revenue brought in was $28,800. Total expenditures were $8,000, with the gain roughly of $20,000. The overall rentals for the entire year, overall gain for the district was $63,480. As a reminder, with that money, that goes to help offset some of the cost of using the building with all these different rentals. The last report that is attached is the compensation report. Annually, this report must be presented to the board and must be posted to the district website by October 1st. This is basically highlighting base salary plus any additional bonuses or any type of retirement enhancement for the staff during the '17-'18 school year.
We don't have to put a total on this?
There is, I believe there is a total on the last page.
Page 43.
With base salary plus all of the retirement enhancement.
I meant, I should have been clear.
You'd have the total at all, but it's all there.
No, I meant the total for each person.
And I don't think so. This is the state report template.
Yeah, this is, this is what we have to submit to the state.
No questions were submitted?
No questions were submitted.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Discussion information items, any FOIA requests?
Yes, three. Two are from NBC, but they were just following up for additional information, and one was looking for a list of staff names, email address, and position. Those responses are included. I think Mary Ann sent a complimentary list to them, but also directed them to our website, and we were able to send follow-up information to NBC with the number of concussions for last school year. I think they're doing a study with all the Illinois High School Association schools. So we responded to both those with the information we had available.
Police Department radio, still an open item?
Yeah, it's still an open item. You know, the Communication Center has now been fully implemented, and they're up and running. We met with all the police chiefs the last week of July before the start of the school year, myself, Lane, Kristen, Dave Mannan, and all the local police chiefs, as well as the police chief from the zoo. What I'm going to have Lane do this fall is, in the next few weeks, just go around and do a radio check to see if he's encountering any dead spots, and then I will sit down with the village manager and Chief White, who had originally requested this, see if there is any concerns from our school liaison officer and what our next course of action would be to consider.
All right. We can move on to, this is an opportunity for visitors to present statements. Seeing that there's nobody in the audience, I will not read the long requirements, so we move on. This time where the Board Book, we get a chance to ask board members if they want to add any additional discussion items. Look to my left. Am I right? No items, all right. We now have the consent agenda action items. Approval of the minutes?
Resale of the board education township bicycle district two-way Cook County, Illinois. Your body takes the following action on the list of consent agenda items. Approved minutes from the meeting held on July 10, 2018, opening closes, presented and amended in the August 14, 2018 board agenda packet.
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to ask Kevin one question. Do you trust this? Oh, we did. I think it was a part of your report.
Okay, never mind, no question.
All right. Since there's no discussion, go for the vote.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
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 Yes. Go on to the old business, action items, life safety items, capital improvements.
No update on that. Joel is continuing to do some work. I think there was only one question in the bills, and that was related to some of the work that was required under Amendment 22, but Joel Hasi, our facilities director, has done a nice job working with local subcontractors to address a lot of those items within budget. So I will send another, I did a facilities update with my facility advisory council in the beginning of the school year and what was planned for the summer, or at the beginning of the summer, I should say, and we put that summary in, I think in the June board meeting, and I'll have another one in September to highlight what we finished over the summer work.
All right. The tentative budget?
So I would like to do, I'll start off the presentation tonight on the tentative budget. Based on the conversations that occurred at the July meeting, myself, Scott, and Kristen spent a lot of time over the last month working on finalizing the tentative budget for the board to review tonight, and those changes, once discussed tonight, will be updated to the website and be on display then until December, when I think we have a final budget. I'm sorry, September. First off, based on the discussion, I think Mr. Walsh had requested, and I think one or two other board members agreed, that it would be helpful to see a five-year budget analysis. That was included in your packet. I didn't receive any questions on it, so I'm just going to highlight the key points. Mary Ann, if you can go to the next page. But overall, over the last five years, I highlighted any year where, Scott and I highlighted any year where the expenditures or revenues were significantly off. With the exception of 2014, which our expenditures were off by about a million dollars, our expenditure budgeting has been rather accurate, like within less than a percent accurate. So I think we're doing a good job with our expenditure budgeting. In 2014, we were in the first contract negotiations under my tenure, and we had reached a memorandum of understanding to shift certified staff and non-certified staff to 24 pay periods. So originally in that budget, we had all the pay that had to be issued before that whole school year, and then we were able to spread that out with the June and August pay cycles. So that caused the one year of expenditures to be high. The three, the other three years of revenues is where, is where we seem to have our biggest swing, and as you can see in the highlights, a majority of that is because of tax collection and distribution in Cook County, and then state reimbursement payments. Those account for the significant amount of the revenues being off from the projected budget. So just looking back at these five years and looking at the revenues and expenditures, I don't see any real reason to change the way that we have been budgeting, and that was part of the discussion in July. I want to now direct your attention to the tentative budget. And let's get start with the assumption pages. Scott was kind enough to go through and highlight all the changes in blue for the board. Traditionally, we, when we do our assumptions, we look at the current, the projected fiscal year budget versus how the previous fiscal year's actuals came in. I did that slightly different this time, just based on the discussion that occurred in July, so you can see where we're really trying to close the gap with revenues, so that hopefully our projected, at this point, our projected deficit will come in closer to what we are projecting. So the assumptions are written based on budget versus budget, but I want the board and the community to understand that all budgeting decisions were based off of the actuals. And in some of the years, or some of the accounts where there was a significant fluctuation, we also did a three-year historical on the actuals. We had one question that was submitted on the assumptions, and I believe that was related to the township treasurer, and Scott was following up on that. So Scott, you want to report out on that question?
Yes, I'm working with the treasurer to figure out exactly what was the total amount of pooled money. That's going to determine what the interest that you're going to make. I had an early projection on it that was put into the budget. I'll be following up with them to just double check, did that pooled amount increase, decrease, or where it's going to be? With the preliminary talk that I had this week, it sounds as if it probably is a slight increase, so I'm going to be following up with them on what they believe would be the estimated earning, interest earnings.
And we can adjust that before the form of...
Before the September.
Before the September budget. There were no other significant questions on the assumptions. The reason I, you know, to give you an example of why I went budget to budget this year, two I'd like to really highlight, general state aid, you know, with this new funding formula, we received 1.9 million last year, we only had 1.35 budgeted. So this tentative budget, we went through, we called the state, we checked the FRIS sites, Scott did a lot of background on this, they're projecting that we should be around 1.913. So that was a $560,000 increase from the previous budget year, which is why I did some budget versus budget, because there were some significant changes. One other one that I thought was rather significant was special ed reimbursement, both on the federal end and on the transportation side. In the federal end, we received $215,000, and we only had 135 budgeted. So Scott and Sheila Jursis, our special ed director, went kid by kid that are outplaced or having any tuition costs related to, and tuition is reimbursed on a, in the rears, is that correct, Scott?
That is correct.
And so, well, they went through student by student for last year and figured out a more specific projection of reimbursement from the federal government, so we're going to budget this year closer to the 215 that we received. So that was an $80,000 increase. And there was one other large increase, and I think that was, Scott, help me out, is it the $40,000 for the age group gymnastics?
Yes, that's to be more in line with the revenue that that program generates. As the program continues to grow, we went with the three-year average on that one. But as a reminder, though, this is an in-and-out account, though. So as you increase the revenue to make it more adjusted to where it actually is, you're also adjusting then the salaries that are being paid out. So we wanted to be much, much more closer towards the end of the year when the actuals come in, to try to get a better snapshot of exactly what we, what we have and what we're dealing with.
On the assumption side for the expenditures, again, they're highlighted in blue. We went through, and I think we received some good questions in July that made us take a closer look at how we were doing some account, our line items in each individual account. So we spent a lot of time on special ed. Now, those accounts have always come in at or under budget, but the way we were doing our personnel tracking document, position control document, we hadn't updated some of our aides into their correct departments. And so, yes, everybody received their pay, and yes, the total budgets were under budget, but it looked off to the public who would say, well, you know, one special ed account came in $40,000 under budget, while another one came in $40,000 over budget. So again, some additional time was put in from Scott and Sheila to work on specifically aligning the accounts with the staff placement. In a perfect world, I'd like to take all non-certified special ed support staff and have them in one account, but in the previous years, some of the state funding came off of, you had to break your programs into different...
Based on positioning.
Yeah, different special ed needs. And so we are still currently budgeting under that, although it's not included in the new state funding formula, but I'd like the state to do something for two or three years before I go and cancel a practice that we've been using for 10 years. And we had received, I think, two or three key assumption questions. One was related to testing, Scott?
The testing account, the reason for the decrease in the testing account is the administration's no longer going to administer the ACT test, and then also the state is picking up the cost of the PSAT 910. So the paid service to purchase those tests that were being administered the previous year now are going down in FY '19.
And as the board recalls, the state test now for high school is the SAT, and we had some inconclusive sets of data that we wanted to complete, so we were paying out of pocket to cover the last two years of incoming freshmen that were waiting for them to be juniors and pay for them to take an ACT. This will be the first year where all of our students have been on an SAT flow, so there was a $20,000 savings there. We had an additional question submitted.
Can I ask one question on this testing? If you don't mind, would you change the assumption the way you explained it? Because it's a little difficult to understand where it says, it's an expenditure, it's a test, and expenditure decreased due to state funding test, that's a revenue funding. So can you...
We tweak the verbiage.
Tweak the verbiage so it explains why it's actually going down?
The next question that was submitted that was the expenditures related to our natural gas, and we used a three-year average on this, but also Scott had called our provider twice. We have a call from April where they provided us a projection, and a call in June where they provided us a projection. April's projection, based on a monthly cycle, had us at $70,000, just over $70,000, and June's projection had us at $79,000. And so we, although we only spent $60,000 in actuals last year, maybe it was a light winter, we went with the higher projection that they sent us in June.
Makes sense.
But we did call the provider, and Scott did have interaction with, actually twice with the provider. And then Scott, I think you had one other question on special ed, but you're going to go into that, a little bit into the budget?
Yeah, that's...
Is that correct?
You kind of addressed it a little bit with how you said that we looked at the actual positioning of all the different positions within it, and tried to adjust the general ledger to match, but we'll touch on it when we get there.
Okay, I don't, I think I covered all the key questions on the expenditure assumptions. If we go to Board Book page 93, is it?
92 and 93.
And there was a question submitted about summer tuition. Scott, you want to address that one?
Yes, so this account here is looking at all of our summer school and all our summer camps. So for the past three years, we were running right around 1... So for the past three years, we were running right around 130, 130,000. This previous year, FY18 came in at 151, which was a little higher than normal, but we also had more campers this year. So we looked at the three-year average and bumped it up to 139,000. Once again, trying to be a little bit more closer to the pattern on it, increasing it. And like I said, the other, other factor that we have to look at is sometimes we're collecting revenue from two different fiscal years. So depending on when we're receiving camp money, it could hit in one year or the other. So there is some swing in the actual, the actuals that will come in at the end of the year.
Page 98, we already addressed, that was a testing question. Page 100 was the special ed department. Scott, do you have a quick analysis on that?
Yeah, the biggest ones that were changed were the certified salary and the non-certified within the different special ed departments. So that's where you'll see the biggest change with it. Once again, I worked with our special ed director to make sure that the general ledger lines up with their actual positions that they have within the department. And this should not have then the major variance at the end of the year, where one account could be 20 grand over, and then another one is 20 grand under.
And the new accounts that you established?
The new accounts that were established in this one, just for tracking purposes, is I broke out the special education office. So I took out the special ed director and put that into the special ed office, and then also took out the administrative assistant to the special ed director and moved it to that special ed office. They worked previously in the learning resource department as the capture-all for special education. But when you're trying to track the actuals of admin salary, it's a lot easier to actually have that line item broken out. So that's why I did that within the special education department.
And there was a short question on 100 regarding the idea grant. I believe it's under special ed as well, but closer to that, to the bottom?
It should be one of the last items in the 1200 function code, which is special education. There was a $35,000 budget for FY18. That has been zeroed out and has been applied to the LANSI purchase service agreement. So those idea dollars go to offset the cost of our purchase service that is needed within the district.
So the board understands, I am, as a directing board member for LANSI, this Riverside Brookfield is one of the only high schools that participates in the LANSI special ed cooperative district. It's us, LT, and then the rest are all elementary districts. And so, we had a big restructuring over the last year, two years, that we worked with the outgoing director and the new incoming director. But a majority of the schools wanted a more of a pay-as-you-go or pay-as-you-need, so that there used to be costs that were sent to all the schools, and some schools weren't using those services, but just, you know, it was traditionally how they broke up the administrative functions, the staffing functions for the cooperative. And so what we've done is, most of those options are now paid for, paid purchase service agreements. So when you get your federal dollars from the idea grant, basically what they're doing now is all they're leaving in there is the professional development. So each individual school has the right to choose how they want to professionally develop their staff. The rest of the money is then applied to their purchase service agreement. And I believe we have a purchase service agreement of just over, about what, 500,000?
So, I think a little over 600.
Okay, so all those are, it's not like we're losing money, it's just going to address additional, an additional expenditure.
Can you give me one clarification on the special ed? If you're still on page 100, right?
Okay.
So the new section in the, it's easiest, I think, to look at the function column where it's a special ed office.
Okay.
So your first four lines, well, really, that whole section, we're increasing it by about 190,000, because there was no budget, right?
Correct.
That is correct.
And then if you go to two sections below where it says LR, what does it stand for?
Learning resource.
And they're there, we're decreasing on the column, second column from the right, by 150,000, right?
Yes, 141, and then?
Well, the net is 150.
Okay.
And then, under the self-contained, in the second line, for non-certified salaries, we're decreasing by 136. So there's a 280 decrease and a 190 increase. Do they somewhere in smaller amounts net out? Because aren't our special ed salaries going to be higher next year than they were last year? Based on some of the things we've been told with new students coming in? Maybe it's littler pieces in between, but that's why I was asking the question. It doesn't jump out that where the debits and credits are offset each other.
No, I know, but the biggest, the biggest difference in the whole entire special ed, the staffing stayed the same as far as FTE for teachers.
Okay.
The only difference is, under the non-certified, I removed one para that was not filled. There was a para that resigned in December, and the job was never filled. I had it in there as a placeholder, and that is no longer needed for the non-certified, so that was pulled out.
Okay.
And then we also, we changed some of our purchase service.
Yes.
So do we expect our special ed to be higher a little bit next year?
Or out of district tuition?
Out of district tuition is higher.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So out of tuition, so out of district tuition, like, we put up to like a million two, right?
Yeah, it's in the assumptions, I believe.
Right.
What we're increasing that by.
And this, if I'm reading this right, so we're going to spend a million 50,000 in staffing for special ed, is that?
Am I reading that right?
Yeah, I mean, included also in there are some textbooks, professional services. But yes, in large, I would say 80%, of that is on salaries. And the next question is business ed, and that's on page 101. And that was the position that we had, we're unable to fill. So that staffing has been spread out through other departments and accounts for the 1.1 increase, and at the bottom of her chart, it's still open.
The 0.1?
Yeah, the 0.1.
So are we going to have people teach the courses that aren't certified?
No, so we had, we had a 0.3 position, and we weren't able to fill that. So we canceled those three courses. And then we shifted 0.2 of that to fine arts, to give students opportunities to take electives within that department. And so then we saved a 0.1 for transfers.
Okay.
I'd like to direct the board to page 106. This is another question that was submitted, and I think this was a good thing. It's got to with the non-certified salaries under the assistant principal. Scott, want to just talk about the change you made there?
Yes, included in that line item is the security officers, the SLO, the administrative assistant to the assistant principal of student affairs, and then one attendance clerk. Included in that figure for that number is the wage increase. And the biggest increase is the, I put the SLO into that account. In the previous year's budget, the SLO was spread around different accounts. The biggest account that was in previous was the crossing guard account. So there was money in there that we used to, it was already budgeted, so we billed the SLO out of there. But for moving forward, it just seems that it fits best under the assistant principal of student affairs.
109, you had a new administrative account?
In 109, under-
Tech services?
Tech services. I split the tech director out of the non-certified salaries. Here again, this is strictly for tracking purposes on that. The non-certified salary account has the assistant tech director and the PC support specialists with their wage increases.
And then there was one other question on the bottom of that page, and I think that's where you moved the phone account?
Yes, the paid service under the internet, there is a decrease of, I believe it's around 20,000. That was moved to the operations and maintenance internet telephone account, so that everything billed to the phone and internet is under one account now, which is under operations and maintenance.
Go ahead, are you going to do that spreadsheet that shows that we didn't increase our administrative stuff, the cost by greater than 5%? That we have to meet that requirement?
I don't believe that we're over that. It's only on, it's only on specific categories.
We have to do this, we'll do the spreadsheet before the September meeting, though, just to make sure before you approve the budget. Because if not, there is a resolution that needs to be passed.
I believe the ones that the, that the state looks at, we're still under it.
Okay.
So on page, I'd like to just have the board briefly, I promise this will be the last thing we'll discuss with the budget till September. It's on page 89. And so, Board Book, this is our overall summary. And so, after all this work and all of the discussions over the last three months, we're still about where we were projecting. Projecting a deficit of 231,372. Now, I'm aware of two, we have two or three students that have transferred in, that have pending IPs that we need to look at. And so there could be some cost impact related to that. And Kristen, as she mentioned tonight, she has to see how the transfers shake out. And with our science classes, we might need to add a 0.1. But I would still anticipate that the deficit should be under about $300,000, which is what we originally said in June, we lowered that to July. And so we're sitting at $230,000 deficit right now. But it will be more, it will become much clearer once attendance stabilizes and we go for the final budget in September. Again, we are only budgeting at 99% property tax collection. The historical data over the last five years has shown a collection rate of about 99.3, 99.5. So if we receive some prior year collection dollars, we get one additional percent that could almost flatline the deficit to a small deficit. It's about 200,000 for every 1%. So we're budgeting at 99, and I don't anticipate a big fluctuation in state aid. I still have 300,000 in there for tax refunds. Last year was a triannual. This year is not a triannual, so I'm not anticipating as many tax appeals, but there is 300 in there for that. So I would say to you, worst-case scenario, $300,000 deficit. Best-case scenario, under $100,000 deficit. That's all I can do is project for you. But after all, all of this work that we did the last month, and we've tightened up some things with the actual, you know, the specific line items, the overall budget hasn't changed much.
Thanks for all the effort.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
We already dealt.
I should have submitted before.
So you're going to ask it tonight?
Well, it doesn't have to be answered tonight. Just like, if we look on, Scott, like, page 87, 88, okay, you've got these percentage increases, which is great. Say, 2018, expenditure 25,000, 25,71,000. That number's not the same as what you had on the initial chart on page 83.
83. Is this the part of the five-year summary?
Right.
Okay, no, a great example on this. Okay, when I was pulling this data, in order to go back so many years, I have to use annual financial reports to do it. So some of the figures that are in there are AFR numbers. The reports, I mean, this, let's see, 19 and 18 are actually cash basis. And I know the problem that I had was, was trying to find these in the old files and then trying to be able to filter out everything. The easiest way to do it was to go to the AFR, and I was able to figure out, okay, here's the function that is going in here, here's the stuff that goes into there. So there will be some difference.
Does that make sense, John, or no?
No.
Okay, so in layman's terms, after, although the county treasurer's office works with us on a cash basis and what the board sees on a monthly basis is cash basis, cash on hand, every year after July, June 30th, the school district has to complete an audit. So in order for Scott to go back to some of these years, he had to use the audit numbers. Well, the audit is the only place where they'll take money from other years when we receive tax collections and actually accrue them to other years. So that's why some of the numbers may look a little off. But from the cash basis account, these were pulled off of the actuals that are done from the township treasurer's office on a cash basis.
So, John, remember when we talked about when we've done the audit, the general rule is revenues that come in 60 days after the end of the fiscal year on accrual basis are treated in the prior years.
What about the expenditures?
Same.
Same thing.
Same thing. But it has to be, it's not just little expenditures, though. The thing is, it will-
It will shift.
This is a bit of a deviation than if you did it on a cash.
Cash, yes.
But if you don't have the numbers, you don't have the numbers.
And still trying to go back so many years.
So what, remember, the five years, what we just did in the last month. This chart that's in there, that goes all the way back to 2010.
It's on a cash basis.
We were trying to just show the, how we were managing expenditures over the term, or my term is superintendent. So we were trying to show when we had spikes or increases. And we just did the major areas, we tried to lump things together, like to the high school, the administration, special education. So again, that's also just a snapshot, doesn't really break out detail, but we wanted to show the key expenditure areas.
So, the preview chart, can you summarize that for me? That's based on?
The five-year analysis?
Right.
That was physically going in and taking the cash numbers and broken down with the cash numbers, and then looking at line items at the end of the year that were significantly over budget or under budget to get, to make that difference between what was the projected amount at the beginning of the year to the ending year.
So you didn't break down percentages on this?
No. No.
Are those percentages going to be close to what's on those other terms of?
They were, like, as far as-
I don't hear about the revenue, I just the expenditures.
Yeah, the expenditures, like you said, other than the 2014, you could go, you could go in and look at each individual line item. But overall, operating expenditures, that was the only year really that stood out.
So this, these two will track each other?
Yes.
Okay.
We were only 74,000 off on expenditures last year.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'm going to throw you a curveball here.
Is that submitted?
No.
No. Trying to have a better night tonight than throwing out last night.
It's in regards to levy. And as, there's been a lot of discussion talking about special ed. And we actually do levy special ed, but we levy a very small amount. And you don't have to answer tonight if, because I'm throwing this out of the- And could you give us a reason why we levy so little based on the fact that now we're almost running, what, a $2 million special ed expenditure type of scenario? And if you don't have an answer tonight, that's fair, you just come back.
No, it's, it's okay.
Let's look at that. Let's look at it. Let's not answer on the cuff. Let's look into that, and we'll have an answer in September. That's probably a better way. Because I think we pay a lot of it out of the ed fund.
Regardless, it all filters into the ed.
And with the advantage, there may be an advantage, disadvantage, I don't know. I just, you know, that's why I'm throwing here, and they just won't even have a chance to go back.
There isn't anymore, because they took the cap off. So we'll get you an official answer on it and get that to you.
And then is that, does that lead to a bigger question? Do you, do you do a special ed fund type of scenario? Is that allowed? I mean, I don't know. I'm done with your answer now, off the cuff, just throw that, you know, for, you know.
I think I brought that up.
All right.
I was just curious.
Thank you. Is that it with the?
Scott did a good job, good job, Scott.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all the work, thanks for all the work on it. All right, the press plus policy issue 98.
There was two questions submitted. One of them was on regards to policy 6,60, which applies, it said it wasn't in the packet. That applies to K5 districts. So that will not apply to us. And then we had deleted one word, and we felt that it was better to just eliminate the word significant from the policy and just say.
I'd like to know why. Because we raised, I raised the question last time. Kristen, what is our policy? Do teachers take kids on field trips every day of the week if they feel like it? Or, I mean, if the state, if I, if the policy wants to put the word, you go on field trips if they're significantly enhancing the educational experience. Since we have to pay a sub, it's disrupt, you know, again, I'm sure the kids love to go on field trips, but at some point, they should be in class studying too. So I, I'm concerned you don't want it in there. It makes it sound like we'll let kids go on trivial, the alternative is they can go on trivial field trips.
Kristen didn't have a decision on this, this was myself and a policy council.
I'm sorry, but you have to approve every field trip.
And we felt that the definition that went on after significant, otherwise are not attainable in the class or the academic course or extracurricular program. So that's why we felt that it covered it that way. So that's why we felt that it covered it that way.
I would say too, like, when we talk about a field trip, it also includes extracurricular field trips, which only happen outside of the school day. And so, this is more of a broad encompassing policy that applies to everything. And then specifically, when teachers have to request a field trip during the day, they have to provide a rationale as to why it is a significant learning experience for students.
And why it can't be covered in the class.
A field trip is only during the day, though, right?
No, we use it, we use this definition for our extracurricular programs as well.
Like the ski trip and that kind of thing?
Correct.
They're not educational tours?
Or if a particular club is going off campus, they have to submit it so that we know that they're going off campus and that we have a field trip permission slip on file from all of their parents.
Just look at the.
And we went through all of our administrative procedures. So that, we were classifying a lot of stuff as tours.
Okay.
And what we wanted to do, we wanted to clean up our administrative procedures to really, our tours or anything where they needed board approval for overnight, two-hundred miles.
Okay.
Stuff that was above and beyond a traditional field trip or an extracurricular.
Okay.
So that's why we updated the policy. I recommended the updates to the policy, and then we went through and did all of our administrative procedures this summer.
And you'll see those new forms next month when we bring some approvals for you.
And those were the only questions I received on regards to the policy.
Can we get a resolution? Can we read it?
I will. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves IASB Press Plus Policy Issue Ninety-eight as presented in the August fourteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Any disco discussion? No?
Second was Tim.
To the vote?
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Yer.
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
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 Yes. New business, payment of bills.
Received about five questions on bills. Scott, do you have quick explanations to those five questions?
Yes. Board Book Page One Forty-nine, CDW. There was also CDW and Zones. It's all linked together. What happened here is we had to split the order between two different vendors for the Chromebooks. The reason we did that was to have Chromebooks available for the first day of residency. CDW guaranteed us delivery date for that first day, and Zones just could not, so we split the order on it with, it would have been a bad thing not to have that for our incoming freshmen to get their Chromebook at the first day of residency.
Centas?
Centas is our contractual sprinkler vendor. They completed life safety work for Amendment Twenty-two. The major cost on this one was to add additional sprinkler heads at various locations and then also add some drain pipes to the system.
I think there was one other one about, just while you're sticking on it, I mean, the board doesn't need to shift pages, but on One Fifty-One, there was a question about ESCO, and that was also life safety work. And that was our fire alarm company added additional sensors and additional, um, detections. One Fifty, Scott, you have?
Displanes Valley Region, local share. This is the district's local MASH to be part of the Displanes Valley Regional Cooperative for Career and Technical Education Programs.
E-two Services?
E-two Services. Our old Sonic Wall is not able to handle the upgraded speed of the new internet that we had, so it had to be updated in order to, to handle that.
What's a Sonic Wall?
It's the firewall. So it wasn't able to process the.
Traffic.
The, I don't, I'm not exactly an expert in that, but I just know it's for security purposes, and it wouldn't be able to handle the, the speed of the new stuff with it, so.
A Grange Crane?
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm completely confused. So E-two Services is what kind of service? Do you know?
I do not know. I leave that up to the expert, our technology director, to make sure that it's, it provides security for firewall for our students who are surfing or using the internet.
Oh, that's.
Right. So now that we increased our bandwidth, because we got all four grade levels, that size firewall wasn't enough protection, so we had to upgrade to firewall.
Now I got it. Thank you.
LaGrange Crane?
Board Book One Fifty-three. We had a coil go out on one of our HVAC units and needed the crane to hoist it up onto the roof. This was the best way to do it. It was a safety issue to try to have air marks, guys move it through the building.
And I think that covers everything. Although, Tim Lance was a transitional payment, and that was a settlement from a special ed case for out-of-district tuition on page one sixty-two.
All right. Move on to?
We gotta, do we gotta approve them?
Yeah.
We have the, we have a vote? Yep, we gotta vote.
There was still one question that was submitted on the flood insurance.
I addressed that.
Okay.
He explained that to me. But did we pull out the payment to?
Oh, for Accra?
Oh, we have one bill, I'm sorry. We had a board member submit a request to pull out one bill and take an individual vote for Accra, which provides our services for data collection, student test performance, and teacher evaluations. So Mary Ann, can you, can we, do we need to reread the resolution?
We haven't read it yet.
We haven't, we haven't read the resolution yet, so.
So, Tim, if you want to read the resolution with the pulling of the Accra bill?
Well, say as amended, and the amendment will be pulling the Accra bill.
Okay.
And then we'll do a separate resolution for that. Okay, Mary Ann? Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves as amendment, as amended, the payment of bills as presented and listed in the August fourteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
All right.
Ms. Yer?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
And Mr. Rich.
Yes. All right, now we want a separate resolution?
That's not actually the name on there, is it? Accra.
Kristen, I believe it is, isn't it?
I think it is.
I think it is.
Okay.
All right. Hold on a second.
Yeah, Accra Group Incorporated.
Okay.
Page One Fifty.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the payment to Accra, what was it, Kristen?
Accra Group Incorporated.
Accra Group Incorporated as presented and listed in the August fourteenth, twenty-eighteen Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
I told, I'm not gonna get into a big discussion on this, but I think we're overpaying them. They didn't deliver what's promised, and I won't approve the full payment to them personally. So that's why I asked that I voted separately.
All right, go for the vote.
Can, can we have more discussion on this?
Sure.
This, so right now, it's just the first installment?
Right.
And what do you, what do you mean by the total payment?
Well, that we pay them twice a year, which the, each once, the total's about thirty-five thousand.
It's seventeen-five.
So it's thirty-five thousand.
We paid that last year, though.
We paid.
We paid thirty-five last year. Paid thirty-five the year before. Tim had asked for a contract analysis. I had the attorneys do a contract analysis. I think, and those guys are still on the board. The attorney came back that we, they felt that we were paying for what we were receiving.
That's not what they said. Let's not get in what the attorney said. The discussion we had is whether they were delivering what they promised. And the attorney said, we probably couldn't, under the contract, go after it for them. But they promised to deliver things at a high level for the board. The administration's very happy with the detailed information they're giving, but they promised more than that. And they never delivered it, they never tried to deliver it, and they've never tried to give us a credit for some adjustment because they didn't deliver. That's my opinion on it.
Is this, is this, what year of the contract is this, though?
This is the third year, isn't it?
Third or fourth year. It's a renewal every year.
So we have to vote on the renewal?
It's something that's budgeted for, so it's not something that gets voted on every year. It's part of our budget for our services that we need to operate the school.
Isn't that one that comes up after the three years, Scott? It's not one that automatically?
No, it, it is an automatic renewal at this, no price increase.
Maybe you were absent when all that was going on for two months.
No, I recall the discussion. I'm just trying to think. Maybe we can bring this up? I mean, if we're gonna like, to me, if there's a controversy about this, and it's renewable, I mean, we should, you know, have a separate discussion before we put the whole thing in the budget.
I, I don't agree. So the, the administration is using these services to manage, manage our evaluation tools, so it's not something that can sit dormant. And so, we also are using it to do all the data that we're presenting and tracking for the board. So it's not something that, it changes, we'll put our, I mean, we could eventually put an RFP while we continue to pay their services. Where, where the big controversy came in is when Steve Humphries came and presented to the board, he promised that he was able to be able to do some reports for the board where we could track us compared to the top ten high schools in the state of Illinois. And then they brought a report that compared us to like, an, and, not a real school, but a school similar to us, and then they.
Because we couldn't get.
Well, then they couldn't share what schools they were using data, because we don't need data agreements with all those schools, and I, I, this went on for a couple of months.
But do we, we have an, are we gonna have a report out by you about the use of the Accra data?
Because everything you get is from Accra.
Kristen's report about that.
All the reports you get for our performance bonuses and our growth, and all that's done by Accra for us.
Right, but when's that coming?
This fall. Every fall, we give it.
Yeah, the big failure was the fact that, and I think to your part, was, is how we wanted to benchmark ourselves against other schools and see the progression, and they failed to give us any kind of good indication.
And instead of saying, all right, since we can't do it, we'll reduce the price by ten percent, we wouldn't have this discussion every six months, they just don't deliver what they promised.
But they also.
And I don't think as a public body, we should keep paying a vendor who promised something, was unable to, and twice we read their reports, one was worse than the other one, and they keep billing us without delivering what they promised. No matter how happy Kristen and her staff is with the part she gets, they, they still aren't delivering the full benefit of what we bargained for, and I won't approve, I, I can't, in good conscience, just keep voting to keep paying them the full amount.
One of the things that we able, we were able to negotiate with them when this came up last year to vote against the payment was there was no annual increase. Where most contracts usually go up by, you know, CPI or something there, that's that rate.
Is this payment for in advance for the upcoming school year?
Uh, yes. It's split into two. One in, when it's for a first semester, and then there'll be one second semester.
Is that it, John?
And when during, we're gonna get the report in the fall based on their, their data.
Yeah, so that all comes when we talk about ACT data, SAT data, all of that information comes from Accra.
So here's a, I mean, the, you know, I guess, you know, they feed their data in, and they're using that detailed data. Do we want to bring them back up here and discuss the macro side of this contract again? And open the door?
It's okay with me if you want to.
I'd, I'd like that. I mean, it bothers me that any board member is upset about this, and I understand the adminis, I understand that there is value to this, but it should be.
I, I think the thing I'm upset about is not that Tim has a concern. I think Tim has a right to a concern. Because a year ago, maybe fifteen months ago, he voiced the same concern, so we had the attorney, we met with Steve Humphries. We met with Steve Humphries and the attorney. We did a full-blown review of their contract, the macro, the micro. And so, what kind of came from that was, they're delivering the services that we need to operate the school and to make the data analysis point. They never delivered the board reports that Steve did in his sal presentation at a public meeting to the board.
I made a simple analogy. You pay somebody to paint ten rooms, and they paint eight. You don't pay them for the ten. That's what we're doing. They did a wonderful job on eight rooms, and they didn't do the other two, I wouldn't pay them. And that's the situation here, and regardless of whether the attorney said we could go after him and force him to do it or not, which was their determination, they promised they were gonna paint ten rooms, and they painted eight. And we keep paying them the full amount, and I just don't think it's right.
Are, are there alternative vendors out there?
Not to my knowledge. We went through this before we.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if there have been new, alternative, any new data collection services out there or not.
No, and I think if we get another year or two under our belt with our evaluation, and we have four years of evaluation data, we may be able to sit down and do a new contract. I need another year or so to get four years under the state evaluation model, because we're tracking the professions, and that, that depends on people's livelihoods, tenure. So we, we, I can't just go and throw this out there, because that's why we put all the time into it a year ago or so, and we had, I mean, I think Ed was still on the board, and it was a lengthy discussion. We had a couple lengthy discussions about it.
Nobody ever disagreed. They didn't deliver what they promised. Our attorney said we couldn't do anything about it. I disagree with that. I mean, I'm doing it as an attorney, as a voting board member. They painted eight rooms, they promised ten, why do we keep paying them for the ten rooms? We're perfectly happy with the eight rooms they painted, but they didn't deliver, and they've never come back and said, you're right, we promised more, we'll cut the fee by two percent, or five percent, or ten percent. And I just don't, don't think it's right.
But what they did do was not increase their fee in order to make up for it.
So, there's a, how does that make up for it? The agreement, did it allow them to raise their fee?
Right. Were, were the new members, I don't believe the new members actually saw their presentations. They.
No, this is all new to me. I, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I.
So what we maybe need to do?
Well, basically.
If we're not happy with somebody, we need to tell them we're not happy.
Well, I would back off. I would say Tim's not happy, because on presentation, they made to the board.
Well, I wasn't happy with it either, because I walked away saying, basically, you have to physically move up your campus and move it to a different demographics, is what I, what I expressed at the time.
The biggest thing that was the snag with the vendor and the board was when they did their analysis and they did the report for us, it was based on a hypothetical high school that had similar demographics. And our board wanted specific data like, well, no, we want Hinsdale Central's data, we want Stevenson data. And they said, we can't give you their data and compare it to it, because you'd have to have data agreements, and, and we were going back. Then they brought the president of the company in to speak to the entire board. So I mean, we vetted this extensively. I'm not saying they gave you the answer you're looking for.
They didn't. We told them what we wanted ahead of time. They said they'd deliver, and afterwards, after we paid them, they said they couldn't. They keep charging us and keep not delivering. And again, I'll keep saying it. You're perfectly happy with the eight rooms, they delivered well, I have no problems paying for that. But they're not delivering on the other two, and we keep paying them. And unless you take a stance like that, all your vendors are gonna take advantage of, or could, say, well, that's why you're no matter what. or could, say, well, that's why you're not willing to.
I think I do a good job of making sure vendors don't take advantage of us.
I'm one vote.
I'm just saying. Well, what happens is, is, you know, and Dr. King starts, so he just, he feels like he's missing something.
But they, but in the kind, in the kind, whether, whether we're happy with the, the data that they are, they are supposedly supposed to be coming in front of us and presenting this summarized macro data, we haven't seen it in the past year.
Yeah, we haven't seen it.
So what I'd like at least, why don't they come and get a presentation in front of the new board since there are three new members here who haven't seen one iota of their presentation? And they can get an assessment of whether they're happy with it and also if you can send the contract to those three, those board members so they can see what was specified in that contract. Because basically it was to, it would, we thought it was a benchmarking tool that we can start using as a basis to benchmark against. We didn't necessarily say, identify that, that data as being Hinsdale Central. What we wanted to say was put it in a pool of, of what we thought were, were schools we'd like to benchmark. You don't have to tell us which ones are and how we compare with these certain metrics. And, and when they presented it, they fell flat on our face and they couldn't present it. But I think in the contract, it says they should be coming out, making a macro presentation in front of the board. And I think we at least get that to come out there again and, and, and see how we're, you know, see how that, and then let the three new board members see that presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with Accra. I've worked with them before. I've never known them to be able to provide that kind of information.
Well, they promised that to us.
That's why I'm surprised to hear that.
We had them here before we signed the contract and we drilled them and said we want to use it as a benchmarking tool. And they said, sure, no problem.
They've been promising us something and then says, oh, I can't do it.
Yeah, I had no idea they could provide that type of information.
Right. What happened that night was that. He has to sit here and he has to listen to 10 for 10 minutes, for 20 minutes.
Correct. But no, no, the issue is they, they made a presentation in order to get us to even sign up.
Right.
And we said we want to use it as a benchmarking tool and here are the specifics of how we want to benchmark it. Sure, no problem.
Sounds very frustrating to me.
Yeah, and if we got rid of them, it would be a data manager in-house, which is a salary and.
No, no, no problem. We understand, we understand.
I don't think that's something.
No, that's not the issue.
You don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater.
Yeah, no, we don't, we, I keep saying.
She's perfectly happy with it.
Well, if you won't pay the bill, then you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Why not?
Yes, you are.
They give them the opportunity to come in and say, you're right, we didn't deliver, we'll cut our costs, our fees. It's simple.
So you're strong-arming them.
No, I'm saying, deliver what you said.
Okay, so I think we need to take a vote on this.
We'll take a vote on that, but can we set them up so that they come out and, and maybe we get the contract in hands of the new board members? So they can see what the contract and how we want it.
I would love to see the contract.
All right.
Absolutely.
Fair enough.
I have one more question. When can we terminate it in the contract?
At the end of this fiscal year. We have to give them 60 or 90 days notice.
But John, before we terminate it, we need to have something else in place. A lot of software.
I'm not saying we should terminate it. I'm just trying to think ahead.
Right.
If we're not happy with them. Well, that's why I raised the question of their alternative data collection service.
I'm happy with it.
I'm talking to the new board members and so we're all on the same page.
And staff is happy with them.
I know.
Yes, and that's what we pay them for, is to take their recommendation. And so if Kristen and Kevin are happy.
We rebid out all kinds of things all the time. We look at whether someone can do it better or not, or not, or not, all the time. So if we want to do that, then I think we should do that.
Hey, but one of the, one of the things we did ask them was to, for benchmark, get them to come and make presentations. And we didn't, we didn't get one last year, so we need to at least get that.
Was it last year when John Gotta came in?
No.
It's kind of it. I guess I have a lot of.
It was last year, but it might have been before the new board started. Might have been towards the end of Mike Madden.
So that would be 15 months.
That's turned.
Yeah, because I don't remember that at all.
Because we had the president of the company come and then Dr. King and John started arguing about statistic analysis and the P-value. And that's what I was trying to say, like, okay.
That was good.
Well, you can take a look at the.
We went in depth on a lot of it.
I think it was two years ago, but, but what's that?
Look, here's the point. And I think Gary would agree with me. This whole educational industrial complex is used to coming before boards and just doing a sales job. And everyone on the board says, oh, okay, okay, okay. I mean, this board, I think, may be unique in the fact we've got well-qualified individuals who are questioning this stuff, so I think it's good. And I'd like to see Accra sort of respond to us instead of just, and give them a chance when they come in. So that's all I got to say.
All right, let's go with the vote.
Ms. Smithing?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Ms. Fresca?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Mr. Gretchen?
Yes.
All right. We have a transfer of funds from working cash to capital projects listed here. I would like, and I would like to table that until we get better momentum going further on, on what this relates to.